Good evening. It's the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, November 5th, 2012. The first item that we have is the signing of the warrant.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have meeting minutes of October 15th, 2012.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That, too, is unanimous. The next item that we have is citizen participation. Is there anyone in this vast audience that would like to address the board that's not on our agenda? Moving along, we have our public hearings. And the first one that we have is scheduled from the Insurance Advisory Committee on a Recommendation of Senior Plans. I had a meeting with our town treasurer, Barbara Oja. She indicated that she would be unable to be here tonight, but did point out that her correspondence is pretty self-explanatory and wanted me to point out just a couple of things. We're talking about the renewal of the insurance plans offered to our Medicare-eligible retirees. The two plans are Fallon and Harvard Pilgrim. The Harvard Pilgrim looks to have a percentage change of an increase of .35 percent, and the Fallon Senior is looking to have an increase to 4.5 percent. Barbara indicated that both of these changes are well below the industry trend of 5.3 percent. Retirees enrolled in Fallon Senior will pay an additional $3.60 per month, and retirees enrolled in the Harvard Pilgrim will pay 72 cents, an increase in cost. Part of the Fallon Senior cost is due to a minor benefit change with the addition of an additional hearing exam. So, the Insurance Advisory Committee voted unanimously to recommend the Fallon Senior rate of $279 and the Harvard Pilgrim enhanced rate of $321.44 effective January 1st, 2013, and she's requesting that the selectmen adopt this recommendation. Is there a question?
Nice job in summarizing it, Mr. Chairman. It's just, I think every time we receive these increases, it's so difficult. Insurance is so difficult, complex, and I think Barbara and her committee do a wonderful job, great job, of making sure that our rates are a little bit lower than the surrounding rates. It's always difficult, even for an increase of $144 or $12, to be borne on by the retirees. It's already difficult. But, having said that, we continue to try, and hopefully someone someday at the state level, federal level, will come up with something where these costs continue not to go up like they do, but as far as what our committees have done and Barbara have done at the local level, I think this is, you know, is reasonable, and it's a lot lower than what the area communities are dealing with. So, I would make a motion for her recommendation regarding the HB-Enhanced and the Fallon Senior.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'd second on the advice of the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Is there any comments you'd like to add, Bill? I know Dean addressed it.
No, I think he covered the topics. It is a shame that it goes up, and it goes, keeps going up at a good clip, but we seem to be doing a little bit better than some of our counterparts.
Absolutely. So, motion made and seconded. Call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, Louis, please notify Barbara and the committee of that action. The next item that we have is an application for a change of manager for the Courtyard Management Corporation, DBA Courtyard by Marriott. And looking at, it looks like the petition for a change of license indicates that the change of manager will go from Jennifer Goslin to Joseph Tutula III. Our informational sheet from the town departments indicate that, obviously, there's no zoning issues or planning issues, no outstanding taxes. The fire department and the police department have no issues or concerns. So, with that, I'll ask you to introduce yourself.
Name's Joseph Tutella. I've been a resident of Milford for 13 years now. Resided with my wife, Anne Marie, who teaches school here at Milford Catholic. She's an art teacher, and my children's Julian and Joseph. So, I'm very excited to be working here in Milford. That's cut my commute down quite a bit, instead of driving into Boston, Cambridge, where I spent, I spent 25 years with Merritt International. So, it's a change of management for the liquor application coming up as well, so.
Welcome home.
Thank you. It's glad to be here.
Good luck.
So, this must be nice for you, then, huh? Just roll down the street and you're there.
Seven minutes.
Wow. That's great.
That's great.
Glad to be there.
Good, good, good for you. Good. And everything else is the same, obviously. It's just a change in manager. Okay. Motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Good luck, Joe.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Joe, good to meet you.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe.
Okay. We now have Joseph Fitzpatrick. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Hi. And this is a proposal that you're going to talk to us about, Milford Solar Project, DG Clean Power LLC. So, we have some photographs of things, and then also it looks like a net metering credit sale and purchase agreement. So, why don't you please explain this to us?
Thank you. Thanks very much for the opportunity. By way of a quick introduction, DG Clean Power has been independent power developers for the last 10 years, starting primarily in the larger gas turbine power business. Had the pleasure of purchasing the Milford unit in 1997, and then officing here in Milford for about five years while we developed the Blackstone and Bellingham facilities, and a little bit later on, in purchasing and repowering the Lowell gas turbine facilities. In the last two years, because of the pretty unique incentives that the Commonwealth has made available for solar, we've developed six projects, large solar farms. Two are up and running in Oxbridge and Douglas, and I'll illustrate the Oxbridge project in a second. Two are moving toward financial close toward the end of the year. One is a four-megawatt project in Plimpton. The other is a two-megawatt project in Northbridge. So, these are projects that have effectively all their studies behind them and are moving toward financing. The other two are in relatively advanced development, Dighton and Rutland. We expect financial closes in the first quarter of 2013. When I met with your manager the other day, we understand that your general municipal consumption is in the range of 10 million kilowatt-hours for your municipal electric accounts. So, the proposal we're talking to you about for net metering, and we will get into some of the mechanics as we move into this about net metering itself, but the proposal that we're making to you essentially targets half of your municipal consumption. So, that certainly leaves Milford with the opportunity to entertain other proposals, take on proposals within the town of Milford itself, and still have the option of getting some near-term operational cost savings that our two projects in Northbridge and Dighton present to you. The two projects, which will be running somewhere between the first and the second quarter of 2013, will present a first-year operational savings to the town in fiscal year 14 of $200,000, with a 20-year long-term savings of $7 million. I'm going to start to get into some of the mechanics. The net metering credit is essentially a monetary grant. It's cash. It's cash provided by National Grid to customers in its service area. So, when a solar project is developed, the developers or the owners of the project have the availability to allocate that credit to any customer in the load zone in which we're operating, in this Milford area. So, we can allocate that credit to the town of Milford or any other customers. The credit that we're calculating, based upon the $200,000 a year first-year operational savings, will represent a 30% discount against the existing retail rates that you're paying in those municipal accounts. I'm going to illustrate Oxbridge and begin to describe how this gets into the mechanics of net metering. The next two slides are our Oxbridge project, which has been generating net metering credits of the town of Oxbridge since last June. It's a 20-acre site in the Quaker Industrial Park at the intersection of 146 and 122. Those are 10,000 solar panels. The second page is an illustration, a picture, of what this looks like. These are very straightforward projects. If you've built gas turbine projects, you particularly think these are straightforward projects. And so, the projects that we're talking about.
This is it right here?
That's right.
That's what's there now on the ground?
That's been running and creating revenue for the investor, obviously, but also net metering credits to the town of Oxbridge since last June. The same is true of the town of Douglas. Almost a carbon copy has been built in the town of Douglas, off Route 16, Brookline Terrace, in a commercial space, right next to the fire department. That project is built and will enter commercial service in the month of December. So, they'll start doing the same thing. We have a net metering arrangement with the town of Douglas, similar to all the same mechanics we're talking to you about. If you go to the next page to get into some of the mechanics, should you wish to go forward with us, we will assign the National Grid net metering credits of both the Northbridge and Dighton projects, 5 million kilowatt-hours worth, to the town of Milford at the rate of 13.5 cents. I'm going to show you a sample bill in a second that will illustrate it. So, you'll receive a credit directly on your bill, in which that will be a subtraction to the amount that you pay for your delivery and your commodity generation charges. We, in turn, will bill you for 9.5 cents a kilowatt-hour for each of those kilowatt-hours generated, to the extent to which we generate it for the term of the agreement, which is 20 years, and we've provided the manager with a sample agreement. That 4-cent difference between 13.5 and 9.5 cents, in your next year's budget, will be worth about $200,000. We've made some assumptions about utility escalation, which we believe are modest, at only 4% a year, and that creates a value over 20 years of $7 million. One of the reasons that we're encouraging you to look at this carefully and sooner than later is we have some projects that are about to close and are in, you know, mature development, is that there are caps on the amount of opportunities in National Grid's service area. So, right now, the legislature, as of last summer, put a cap of 3% of National Grid's load, for which these net metering agreements can be enjoyed. I'm not saying that the legislature at some point might decide to lift the cap, but that's the world that we're living in. So, it behooves you to look careful at these types of arrangements. We have other projects in development. We have one project that I can't announce publicly, but it's in the Milford load zone. So, we would be prepared to bring you other projects, or you can access those opportunities elsewhere in the market. All I'm saying is, if I look at your full electric consumption, this is an opportunity, if fully built out and embraced by Milford, is more in the range of $400,000 a year and about $14 million over 20 years. So, it's a significant operating cost savings. At this point, I draw a distinction between a net metering arrangement and a power purchase agreement. Power purchase agreement is essentially a hell of a high-water, unequivocal arrangement to pay the energy developer for power. Net metering is different inasmuch as, should either legislature or the DPU decide that the net metering credit is no longer available to customers in its load zone, your obligation to pay us terminates, and that's in the agreement. I've also mentioned to the manager as a side light on our Northbridge agreement, in that particular agreement, we have a make-hold provision that basically says, in the unlikely event that Schedule Z values are lower than what we would be asking you to pay us, we'd essentially remit you the difference. That's because our investor consolidated Essen, which is obviously having some storm issues these days, but has had an active solar development program, New England, thinks that circumstance is so unlikely, we might as well give our customers that comfort level. So, the last chart is a sample bill, just to kind of recap what I've been talking about. I've had preliminary conversations with the manager about how you're procuring your competitive generation services. In no way does our transaction interfere with that. You can take on any competitive supplier you wish. We don't abridge your agreements. We don't stand in front of them on a go-forward basis. So, you're paying about 6.5 cents for energy supply, about 7.5 cents for the delivery charges at National Grid. That's the 13.5 cent value I was pointing to that you're paying for today in your municipal accounts. The net metering credit will be 13.5 cents. We will bill you for 9.5 cents. You will enjoy the difference of 4 cents. And our operational target dates for both projects is June of 2013. Obviously, Northbridge will be a little sooner. Dighton will be a little bit later, but we both, we expect both projects to be generating net metering credits, starting with your fiscal year 14, so you can enjoy the full value of both projects. And I referenced earlier that, should you have an interest in other projects, we can either bring you projects that we're in the development on, or I'd encourage you to look at other opportunities, so that during fiscal year 15, there may be some other ways that you can fully build out this 10 million kilowatt-hour opportunity you have with the town. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's a very interesting, thought-provoking proposal. Let me turn it over to the board. Dean?
Yeah. Thanks, Joe. Joe, so, these savings on page, last few pages there, those would be real savings, not hypothetical, right?
Real. Real. The first reality is, we fix our price. It's 9.5 cents. It has a 3% escalator, and even with the 3% escalator, we still create the $7 million of savings. We're taking the liberty of saying that utility rates will escalate at 4% a year. At the risk of going off on a tangent, natural gas prices are pretty low compared to where they normally are. We're starting in a trowel. We actually think 4% is conservative, but that gives you... So, the certainty is our offer. What I can't guarantee you is the value of that National Grid retail rate, but the comfort I can give you is, that 13.5 cents has not been this low in about five or six years. If we went and looked at those accounts three, four, and five years ago, they're probably 15, 16, as much as 17 cents, because 90% of the electric price these days, all-in, is driven by natural gas prices, only because all these plants, as you certainly appreciate, have gone to natural gas. So, the 13.5 cent number is kind of low on the trowel, and it's very likely to grow over time. So, we think it's very likely that that will go much higher over time. To wit, I mentioned to the manager that on our Northbridge agreement, and a good portion of the 5 million would be Northbridge, we actually have a make-hold provision that says, in the unlikely event, it should be less than 9.5 cents, we'll remit you the difference. We were able to convince ConEd that because it was a non-issue, mathematically, they should offer it to the customer, and they've agreed to do that. So, we're looking to sell you a very large portion of our Northbridge project. Northbridge itself is interested in taking a good portion of the output. Northbridge has one other proposed project, and they're also in a split electric zone, so some of their output just is not available to our project. So, we have about 70% of our Northbridge project available to you with the make-hold provision. And if we can convince our investor on Dighton to make the same provision available, we'll try very hard, but I can't offer you that tonight.
Sure. And Joe, when you say 20 years, right, why is it 20? Could it be lower? Does the town have to be tied in for 20 years?
It's to amortize the investment they're putting in. A two-megawatt project these days is on the order of 8 to 10 million dollars. So, we're amortizing that over time. Needless to say, these things are heavily subsidized already. They're between federal and state tax credits and a green credit that further subsidizes these. Having said that, in normal commercial terms, these are above-market. So, what all these subsidies allow us to do is to pay for the project and amortize it and still create a competitive net meter agreement that induces you to want to enter into it with a sufficient discount.
And as far as like a timetable, Louis, I think this would have to go to town meeting, right?
Again, a couple points. First point being that we do not have to go out to bid cities and towns for this, and a 20-year contract would have to go to a town meeting. Anything over five, I believe, goes to town meeting. Anything over five, we need approval from town meeting to enter into a contract.
Joe, on the last page, the aerial view, what is that again? A picture of what?
I think that's a misfire.
Oh, it's chicken peas. Oh, okay.
No, actually, that's an aerial view of our Douglas project.
Oh, okay.
It shouldn't actually have been attached to it.
Okay.
In fact, that's our Douglas project. That's 766 Somerset Ave.
Now...
It's almost, again, these are clones. These are all two megawatts. They're all kind of, you know, worked up and designed the same scale.
The Oxbridge project, when you went to the town and told the Oxbridge officials what was going to happen and the rates and all that, did that come out to be valid with what you told them the savings would be and all that?
Yeah. It's valid, and they're satisfied with it, because the project was in the town of Oxbridge, and they negotiated for a very good tax pilot agreement. But to be straight up, their discount was only 10% off Schedule Z. At these prices today, this is 30% off. That's a function of just the competition in the market. That's a function of municipalities getting more transparent information and putting downward pressure on what's being proposed by developers. Having said that, the town of Oxbridge looked at a total package of a 10% discount off Schedule Z and the tax pilot agreement that was actually viewed as above-market. In other words, tax pilot agreements are being written in the range of about $12,000 to $13,000 a megawatt. And that tax pilot agreement was close to $22,000 or $23,000 a megawatt. So, the packaged Oxbridge, almost identical to the package in Douglas, was a very attractive package, because they were able to embrace both, since it was a project in the community. So, they got the taxable revenue plus the pilot. The package itself was very attractive. Here, we're an instance where we can't generate the tax revenue for you, and we're creating a much larger discount.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all for now, Mr. Chairman.
Bill?
Obviously, in order to project future savings, you have to put some estimates out there. You have to make budget assumptions.
Right.
And I guess I should say from the beginning of the discussion that I'm very supportive of making sure that the town has some portion of its energy generation being solar, being non-fossil fuel. So, I come at this supportive. The fact that it's less expensive is a greater benefit, but I still believe there should be some portion of what we generate, or what's generated for us, I should say, being non-fossil fuel. But having said that, there's, within those assumptions, you have, you have to project some assumption, and you talked about this, what the assumption is for future costs of power. The other assumption is the extent to which you can generate power. And so, I'm trying to get an understanding of how you schedule that and what your assumption is of, you know, what percentage of capacity are you assuming that you're able to...
Yeah. You know, almost by definition, these are extremely conservative assumptions.
Okay.
And let me, if you don't mind, I'll keep delivering you data.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you can't generate 100% power all of the time, every day.
Oh, God, no. Oh, God, no. In fact, if you looked at the Milford project or projects like it, you know, they might be running 4,000 hours a year, 5,000, 6,000 hours a year, depending upon the age and vintage of that gas turbine. These projects, again by definition, are running more like 1,200 to 1,500 hours a year. And even in those periods of time, they're not running with their full output.
Right.
So, when it's a little cloudy, you won't get 2 megawatts, you get 1.5 or 1.7. Now, you get a lot of kilowatt-hours in that hour, but you won't get full output. So, when you average it all out at full output, if you took the 2 megawatts and say, okay, just assume it ran 2 megawatts at an hour, it's probably no more than 1,200 to 1,500 hours a year, and there are 8,760 hours in the year.
Wow.
So, by definition, these are pretty darn conservative. Having said that, all the solar panel makers, the convention is to guarantee and warranty performance.
Sure.
Over 20 years, you can do that, not over one year. So, essentially, a panel manufacturer is going to guarantee the output of that panel, so it creates certain numbers of hours. And trust me, the people investing in these projects take that as an important piece of paper in financing their projects. So, there is a conservative assumption underneath these projects. They're going to run for the output that you're going to get net metering benefits, almost dollar for dollar.
So, if I were to compare, I guess I'm looking for is an absolute number that you use in your budget, in your budget forecast for percent capacity. How would I look at that and look at other... Because you said all of it's predicated on the fact, whether you can generate power at a given day, a given week, a given month.
Yeah.
And it also has to do with whether there's scheduled maintenance on the lines or equipment, whether, you know, operational efficiencies of the business itself.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to see how competitive your estimates are in this region versus others.
Well, we're into project number six, and if anything, we're finding that the estimates for what these things are going to put out are becoming more bullish, higher. I'll give you a perfect example. When we did the Oxbridge project, they only assumed that a 2-megawatt system would make 2.5 million kilowatt-hours, and based their net metering deals with the town on that number. I'm now authorized to present Northbridge and Dighton upwards of 3 to 3.5 million kilowatt-hours of output, because they have more confidence in how many more hours they can get out of that solar system.
Now, is that driven by technology on the panels, or is that driven by...
It's driven by the engineers becoming less and less nervous about what to warrant for output as they see these systems go into service.
Okay.
And that's been going on for maybe five years. So, our first project was scoped with Constellation, which maybe you're a competitive supplier, I think.
Has been in the past.
Our investor on Oxbridge was Constellation.
Right.
Our investor on Douglas was ConEd. It's the investor on Northbridge. We have another investor for Dighton. So, what's obviously happening is, there are more and more of these systems out there, and there's more operational data about how these systems can perform. So, we're seeing almost a 30% uptick in projected kilowatt-hours from projects. And frankly, one of the reasons I'm here is, we need more kilowatt-hours on this project, Northbridge, than we did in Oxbridge, because it's going to put out more kilowatt-hours. There once was a time when I thought I could satisfy most of Northbridge's needs, just with Northbridge and a sliver that Grafton has an interest in. Our output on Northbridge is upwards of 3.4 million kilowatt-hours, whereas in Oxbridge it was 2.5 million kilowatt-hours.
And I guess the reason, the nature of my comment... And I guess the reason, the nature of my comment and question is really to try to see how the, the contract is structured and to see if I can benchmark those operational efficiencies based on how you run and the technology that you purchase out of your panels and what your estimates are for operational efficiency.
Well, we could do this.
Because what I'm trying to do is protect the town, I'll be very clear.
No, no, no.
Trying to protect the town.
No problem.
From an operation that's less than.
Yeah, we can run a couple of sensitivities for you. First sensitivity would be, what if the thirteen and a half cent value isn't around in the next year or two? We'll show you that impact. I think you'll see it's a marginal impact, but we'll probably, we'll show you a similar sensitivity on a reduced output. Let's say for some reason, our estimates are just wrong and we're only making three and a half million and a three point four, three point two million versus three point four million. We'll show you some of that. And I think what you'll see is the sensitivities swing between the price of the net metering value and the output. So the only way you'd start to get concerned about not getting your full bargain is if not only the output were down and the net metering value started to go down. But I've already tried to point out, in terms of the net metering value with thirteen and a half cents, that is pegged to natural gas at essentially the lowest it's been in about five or six years. So if the manager took out his retail accounts last year or two years ago or four years ago, that value might be as much as fifteen or sixteen cents. We think we're understating the benefits.
Okay.
But we'll, we, we can show you some of our assumptions and run a couple of sensitivities for you to give you the comfort you're looking for.
I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, thank you. Well, I too, you know, agree that it's important, I think, for the town to support and participate in, in solar energy supply. From, from what you're, you're telling me, your proposal, I think, makes a lot of sense. It's clearer to understand than some of the other proposals that we've, we've had in the past. What is your timeframe in terms of getting, getting an agreement from, from the town of Milford?
Well, Northbridge and Dyton are somewhat different. We actually think there's a chance to have Northbridge built out by April or May, sooner than the June time period because we're planning on a financial close at the end of the year. Ideally, we'd like to have an agreement with the town on Northbridge by the end of the year. Dayton, I think if we hadn't agreed with you sometime during the first quarter, that would still meet our schedule.
And does it make any difference to us whether or not the energy's coming from Dayton or Northbridge?
Other than that modest difference in timing, no, because they're the same project. They're priced the same. They're both nine point five cents with a three percent escalator.
It does make a difference. The investor, the investor for Northbridge is Con Edison.
That's correct.
And you can have a great, I have a great sense of expectation that Con Edison financially is well secure. I don't know your other investors.
That's correct.
Which I shouldn't. It's private.
No, the other investor, no, no, it's Infinity. They're a, you know, they're a very large solar operator internationally. Good track record, but to the manager's point, Con Edison not only is a, you know, a blue chipper that's known, they've also financed our Douglas project. They've done a project in Fall River. They have two other projects with municipal light departments. I take the manager's point that if, if I only had one choice between the two, I'd take as much of Northbridge as the market would allow me to because it's perceived as the safer of the two. I happen to think the two of them just are fine. They're very comparable, but I...
I'm not questioning that, Joe. I didn't know prior to this evening who the other investor was.
Yeah, no, the other investor, but I mean, they wouldn't be a brand name. It wouldn't be anyone I would expect you to, to know. And so, you know, they are who they are. But in the case of Con Ed, we have a real track record. We started in Douglas with them not that long ago, about a year ago.
All right, so, so then if we...
Douglas is built.
Okay, so, so if we wanted to, I guess, sign up with the Northbridge facility.
Yeah.
You're talking about having an agreement in place by the end of this year.
That's correct.
Okay, and, and the, the other location, was it Dayton?
That's correct.
That would be, I guess, by April of next year?
Yeah, I, I, I think it could go as late as April for we absolutely needed to have it. The, the issue is, all of the timing issues have to do with how soon the National Grid company will process our interconnection studies and we have no control over that. But based upon experience with them, we think we'll be in a position to close up on Dayton at the end of the first quarter. So that schedule sounds fine.
And, and I take it you're, you're, you're marketing this opportunity to other communities as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Just, let's just be clear. Agreement, what is agreement? Agreement, the Board of Selectmen, I mean?
Yes.
So it's not inclusive of the subsequent town meeting approval that'll be sought down the road?
I discussed this with the manager. I mean, our preference would be if there was any way to have a special. I have talked to Con Ed about closing on the risk of an outstanding town meeting. It's not our preference if there could be a special town meeting to advance this. But when I say between now and the end of the year, it would be a vote of the selectmen to say, this makes sense. We want to go forward. We know we have to move this into another form. But as far as the selectmen are concerned, we're satisfied. We voted. And I think that would have a lot of bearing on Con Ed. I mean, they're not, they're not kids.
Right.
They understand the real world. I've explained it to them as experience suggests that a town meeting with a good, solid deal that the local officials understand is not a big risk. Having said that, we much prefer a special than having to wait till the spring.
Okay. Well, Jerry, do we, do we have authority to even sign a twenty-year agreement?
You could only sign an agreement subject to town meeting.
That's right.
You could work it all out, sign it subject to town meeting. And this, in my view, sounds like it's worthy of us, you know, February special town meeting perhaps. One out of even, one or two, three out of...
Well, if we want to get into Northbridge, though.
Then you have to do it.
You have to do it for the end of the year, right? Is that what you're telling me?
I think, let me get back and confirm with the manager, but I think February would be saleable.
All right, let me ask you this because Louis...
But I mean, we, we would be looking for guidance from you before that.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
And, and not to execute the agreement, but merely to say, we, we want to move this to the other forum. We understand it. Yeah.
So Louis, you obviously have experience with this, dealing with all of the, the power and energy needs for the town. Do you think that this is a worthwhile?
I do.
Project to investigate?
And I, and as I told, I think, you and maybe, maybe all three of you individually, I hate to leave, the easy way is...
Someone call him.
The easy way is, is just to wait and, and walk away. I hate to leave a couple hundred thousand dollars on the table of solar credits, which appears to me, I mean, we're going to have many, you're going to have many of these suitors down the road. This, this is the thing that's coming. Right now, I think, is an opportune time to strike and we could even use this, as I, as I told you, as almost a pilot project. And if in any way that, I, I don't see how we can be threatened in any way. Now, obviously, we're not going to be here to see it seventeen years down the road, or I'm not going to be. But I can't see it threatened. I have a great amount of confidence in, in our investment. What's that?
Deba.
Dean, yeah, he might be. I have a great amount of confidence in Con Edison as an investor, so yes, is my answer.
Okay. Well, let me turn it over to the board. Do we agree with Louis's assessment?
We do.
All right, so now the question is how to best strategize this. And I mean, I think what, what I'd like to have Lou do is talk to Mr. Fitzpatrick, get a reasonable timeframe as to what you would need from us in terms of the agreement and whether we're talking end of the year or February, whatever. And then we can plan it out at this level. I, I would prefer to have the town meeting sooner rather than later to give all the party certainty. But I think if we are going to go to town meeting, we, we need to make the case that this is the best offer or, or the best deal for the town that we can. So I think that's going to include some other investigation. You know, I don't know what, what else is out there. All I remember is that last presentation that we had, which I didn't really understand too well. You know, we've got to have some information for the town meeting as to why this is a good deal and what else we've looked at that makes this a good deal.
Yeah, it's certainly relative, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the competitive landscape. That's why this project at this time is, that makes a lot of sense.
So I take more time, Brian. You know, we're able to get that information, whereas, you know, in February, we've had town meetings and it's worked out well.
We're not going to have that for this year, I'll tell you. We're not going to have that if, when I say this year, this calendar year.
Right. That would be very difficult for us because you're coming into two major holidays.
Right.
Even if we were able to do some, some, some good investigation, we can schedule the town meeting, but that's no guarantee that we're going to get a quorum, you know, in, in, in December, you know, right, right between the holidays. So that would be very difficult for us.
I may have mentioned to the manager that National Grid, somewhat to my surprise, has not been shy about sharing transparent information with communities about net metering deals. And there's a gentleman by name Rowan who runs their whole solar DG program. And I asked him if he wouldn't mind being quoted to communities because the real dilemma for communities is, am I getting a real deal or am I getting a subpar deal?
That's, that's exactly it. That, that's exactly it.
And, you know, I'm not the one to convince you and I think you might start with National Grid itself. They want to see this program move forward and they understand there's a lot of municipal folks who are seeing a range of prices. And we think we're in the market, so I'd encourage you to start with them or, you know, whatever resources.
Well, then, then, I mean, you know, I, I certainly like, you know, what I hear from you and, and I have no problem in utilizing your project as a timetable for us to go forward.
Sure.
So again, what I would ask you to do is, you know, tomorrow, communicate with Louis, come up with whatever type of timeframe is reasonable to meet, to meet your needs. And then we'll have to discuss working backwards from that timetable, the groundwork that's going to have to be done to investigate it and schedule a possible...
And you're absolutely right. And there's one other thing that I want to throw out because I don't want to push forward without ensuring that we do have a good deal. Mr. Rowan may indeed be a good start, but there's another alternative if you want to, if you want to go that way, and that's to hire a consultant on this. I mean, that's, that can be done. It's going to cost money and that's the only other avenue.
We could, we could go out to our P.
Well, you can do that.
The P precludes us.
You can do that. And I, I suggested that when we were receiving the, the many recommendations and, and I, I still think we might be able to do that.
We don't have to, but we can.
No. We can do that after this. I'd like maybe take the opportunity, get to meet with Mr. Fitzpatrick again and also speak to some folks at National Grid and then get back to the board members.
Yeah, I, I think the timeframe is going to be important because if we go beyond your timeframe, then, you know, we can't even consider your proposal. So I think we have to use his timeframe and, and, and then figure out what the best strategy is for us going forward, really with the intent being due diligence so that we can make the case in the town meeting that it's a good opportunity for the town. You know, because I mean, I could envision us getting up to town meeting, making a very nice presentation and people legitimately going to ask, well, you know, how do we know that this is the best deal? And, and I don't right now, but that's, that's the information that we, that we have to put together. So why don't we leave it that way and then Lou, you can get in touch with us. We can put it on for the next meeting to discuss how, how we want to go forward.
All right.
And keep in...
I'll meet with Joe and I'll do some...
Yeah, keep in mind the timeframe that, that he needs and we'll try to fit our work in that timeframe as best we can.
Thanks.
But I want to thank you very much for your proposal.
Thank you.
It was very straightforward, very understandable, and it certainly looks like it's a great opportunity for the town.
It is. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Good to meet you.
That concludes the public hearings. The next item that we have is the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items for you this evening. First of all, as it's the first meeting of the month, pleased to report that all budgets under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen are on target. Secondly, as a result of the special town meeting actions, I'm in the process of updating the capital projects list. I'd like to have this set as there'll be a transition. I'd like to have that done before I leave. So having said that, if the members have any projects that they like it, they'd like to put on the list, please let me know and I'll, I'll do that. Otherwise, I'll just continue. In a related manner, the Milford Youth Center. I just approved the replacement of a condensation return pump at an unbudgeted cost of almost thirty-seven hundred dollars. And I'm afraid after having our folks over there that there are going to be some additional costly updates. I've asked E and E Systems to give me a breakdown of all the projects and costs and I'll include them for you in the capital project update. I also spoke to Sidney DeJesus, our, our director, and suggested that he speak to his committee and that they develop, develop a list of projects that they may want to talk about or bring forward us in the upcoming year, at least to be placed on some sort of list with CIC, Finance Committee, et cetera. Like to remind the members that the tax classification hearing will be held at our next meeting, November nineteenth. If there's any special information that you may want, please let me know and I'll try to get it for you. Excuse me. I'd like to recognize our Emergency Management Director, Fire Chief Tuwi, for his efforts this past week in dealing with Hurricane Sandy. As the board knows, we had a two or three meetings. The chairman was at one of the meetings at the police station on a Sunday afternoon. But these efforts were directed by John Tuwi and he did his usual thorough job of preparing us for the storm. And fortunately, we suffered a minimal amount of damage. Also, Police Chief O'Laughlin and Scotty Crisofulli, our highway surveyor, were prominent and I'm going to thank them also. The DPU has contacted us in order to schedule the upper town hall for the public hearing relative to the Milford Water Company. And just want to give you a heads up that right now, they're looking at Wednesday, December, December twelfth at seven o'clock. We haven't received a legal notice officially, but obviously, as soon as I get that, you'll get it. And finally, this past Friday, I received a retirement notification from Dino Bento, one of our custodians at the police station, who'll be retiring effective January thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. And unless the board objects, I plan on advertising the position on November twenty-first and getting that going and bringing that forward to you. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Dean, questions?
No, no questions.
Bill?
Geez, that was a lot. I appreciate the thorough update. Appreciate the budget information. It's good that we go over that. It's good that we go over that. Just a couple of points in response. You're right, on the emergency management side, you know, I also want to throw in there, I know you didn't mean to exclude them when you talked about Tom's department, but the coordinated dispatch between police and fire and the coordination that both Chief O'Laughlin and Chief Tuohy provide in terms of leadership and direction is outstanding. And I know Scott's group was clearing a lot of drains and making sure there wasn't localized flooding and moving trees. So it's, you know, for anybody who hasn't seen the Command Center, I had an opportunity to go to it twice during the storm and there's an awful lot of technology there and they're well-prepared. So it's a good thing to observe for a few minutes, which is what I did, and then tried to get out of their way. Having said that, that's, I guess that's all I have with respect to your report and then I've got some new business discussion as well.
Okay. Louis, DPU, December 12th. Refresh me, what's our meeting schedule leading up to that?
It's scheduled for November 19th, Selectment's meeting.
Yeah.
And I believe December 3rd and the 17th. 17th could be a little iffy. We may not need that.
Well, I mean, I'm looking for meetings before the 12th so we can have something.
Before the 12th of?
It would be December 3rd.
Right now, December 3rd, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, we need to talk because I'd like to try to highlight that issue as much as we could on the 3rd to try to provide public notice that hopefully can encourage people to come to the public hearing on the 12th. So just, Dean, Bill, think about who, what we can put on that meeting to try to generate some public interest and awareness so that they'll come to the meeting on the 12th.
Got to announce the increases a couple of times that night. I think that might be.
That's just where I was going, Mr. Chairman. You're right. You know, there have been times in the past where they were proposing 50% and frankly, I was disappointed at the turnout.
Absolutely.
That the community provided. The DPU comes out here to hear from the community, to listen to what its individual, what its impacts are to individuals, businesses. And when nobody shows up, Board of Selectmen are interveners in the process, but it's, their silence is deafening. So I would expect, I was going along with what Louis was thinking, at, you know, 83% increase, that one would expect a fair amount of turnout from the residents. And you're right, it's a perfect time to start to bring this up.
December 3rd, maybe we bring in Jerry and have him review the extra help that was approved by the Board of Selectmen in special town meeting. Go through that and go through the process. That may be something to think about.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if we bring any representatives in from the business community to try to assess how it might affect their businesses. I don't know if we have any residential groups that we might want to hear from, but we don't have to decide right now.
Right.
But if everybody can just think about it and whatever thoughts you have, communicate to Lou. My intent would be to have the discussion on the 3rd as a prelude to what's going to happen on the 12th to try to increase greater public awareness. Because you're right, you know, there have been public hearings where the water company has sought large increases and the turnout's very low. And I know it's difficult, particularly December 12th, people are going to be caught up in, you know, all the things that go on.
Oh, they shop.
And that's true, but this is important.
Right.
So I think it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can do to make the public aware.
But, Mr. Chairman, I don't think it's too early to reach out to both our IDC and the Chamber to let them know that this hearing is imminent, likely scheduled for that date. And we appreciate hearing from the businesses on what is potentially.
Or we could even have them in on the 3rd. Invite them to our meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I think we should look at it like a campaign.
Yeah.
We prepare ourselves for the 12th. At the 3rd, Jerry gives a full presentation. We have members of the Chamber, large business, small business, maybe work with the senior center, especially people who own their own homes.
Yeah.
Senior citizens, have some of them come in. And any other groups that we feel could be very effective at that December 3rd meeting.
I'd expect to hear from the hospital, who's one of the single largest users of water.
I think that's incumbent upon the Chamber to get it out.
Right.
Well, and I think we should reach out to them as well. I think that certainly the power company.
Yeah. Waters, they use a lot of.
Waters and the bottling facility. I forgot what it's gone to from St. Oban now to.
Is it Verilla? Verilla? I don't know what it is.
But those are the four big users.
Well, first of all, the date's tentative at this point, right?
They have not, that.
We should get them prepared.
Originally, they called for the 5th.
Yeah.
And they called and said, well, we're going to change it to the 12th.
Okay.
So it's tentative until the legal notice comes out.
Okay, all right. Well, let's wait till that date gets firmed up and then we can reach out to all of the different groups that we've talked about. And I have no qualms in having as many people as we can come in before the 3rd to discuss it and just give the awareness that, you know, you really need to show up on the 12th and tell DPU.
And that would be a good prep for all these, you know, individuals to get ready for the next week, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, so keep that in mind. If you have any other ideas, just communicate that to Louis. So that's what we'll target the 3rd for. Moving on to all business, we received a response from the Town Administrator, the Town Treasurer, Town Council, and the Town Accountant to the finance committees, what they have taken to call the White Paper. And it was important, I think, for me to request this response from these individuals because the original, I guess, White Paper, if that's what they want to call it, originated in 2001. And that was actually the genesis of what we now know as the financial team. And the idea was to get these individuals involved, the administrator, the accountant, the treasurer, along with the financial analyst and two members of the finance committee. And from that ad hoc committee of financial planning, the first report was generated. And that, the date on that was.
Good luck.
April 21st, 2002. So the finance committee recently decided to, I guess, update this, which is fine, but I think it's very important that the original intent of this document be followed in the sense that there's other financial opinion as well. And I think the individuals named Lou, Barbara, Jerry, and Zach did an excellent job in raising some other issues that arise from this document in the area of free cash, the self-insurance fund, the stabilization fund, debt limit, health insurance, real estate tax growth and distribution, along with a wealth of tables and other information. So what I would like to do is to have this opinion letter go off to the finance committee and ask that they incorporate these views into a revised report on the financial guidelines. Do you have any other comment, Dean?
No, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. I think it touched on many important topics, but the areas that made me think about was the self-insurance fund. When this was done in 91, we all agreed that it would be important to put away a certain amount of monies, almost comparable to what we were spending on insurance policy. So I think at that time, it was $360,000. And we were doing that. And then I think just, you know, recently, during the past few years, it's been down to $133,000. So I think we have to look at that. And then the stabilization fund, I think the stabilization fund has worked out very well. I think it's been a savior for the town. We use it for emergencies. We use it for interest. We use it to fund school projects. So I think that is most important. And the other idea is, as far as sticking to any real strict guidelines, I think that we have to be flexible because depending on the situation, whether it be a percent more or a percent less, that would be most important. But I think, and I think all these types of reports, all these types of recommendations bodes as well. And it's just make sure that we continue to place the town in a stable condition fiscally. And I think this is a good recommendation to have this sent to the FinCom and then maybe we can have more discussions with them at a later date.
Okay, great. Bill?
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I agree with you of the importance of taking in the feedback from the various people who have financial responsibilities and input to this document. They should have input. I guess the only thing that I would differ on is, I think it's important to get them into a meeting now. Facilitate a meeting where there's face-to-face discussion, review the input while both groups or all parties, interested parties are in the same room. I'm just concerned about, you know, shooting course, competing memos and documents back and forth and really not coming to a resolution. So what I'd suggest is, the people that, the architects of the White Paper and the primary people that met Barbara, Zach, Jerry, and Louis and others, get in a room. So that's the only difference. Give them the feedback, but at the same time, give them the document, at the same time, get them in a room.
Yeah, and that may be what has to happen. And of course, that's how the original one.
Right.
Was created. At this point, let's send this off to the finance committee with the intention that these comments be adjusted and included in a new document. And if the finance committee doesn't feel that that's possible, then we'll ask them to have meetings with these individuals to do that.
And I would go further to say to have Zach facilitate that meeting. And I do that from the accountant's perspective, not that I expect it's incumbent upon the FinCom to call this meeting, but I think it's incumbent upon full-time department head with financial obligations to facilitate that meeting. Or Louis, either way.
Well, let's get it to them first and tell them what our desire and intent is, that this ought to be the inclusive report that was done back 10, 12 years ago. And let's see where they go with that. And, you know, if meetings have to be had, then I'm sure, you know, Louis can arrange for that. Okay. Let's see. Oh, we also have an update from Louis on the recruitment process for the new town administrator. Lou, if you want to summarize where you're at on this.
Summary is that, this is just an update for the board quickly, was in the town cry on the 26th of October. I received my beacon in today's mail. It is in the beacon. It's been on the MMA website since October 18th. Will continue so till the 7th of December. Daily News and Boston Globe, it was in November 1st. And it's on our website as to the changes. As I indicated, the changes are the changes that the board had indicated that they weren't done. And everything else is the same and we go forward.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
No.
Bill?
We had agreed on this in the past and Louis executed flawless.
Okay. So we'll be updated, but look towards a date of December 7th to see what the final applications are. The next item that we have is some correspondence from Max Farrow. And there's also an email in from Mike Nicholson. And this has to do with the ramp that we had been going forward on for the World War One monument at Draper Park. And I think as both of you are aware, after we had initiated this project, we did receive correspondence from the Historical Commissioner of Milford, quite concerned about how this was going to affect the integrity of the monument. Personally, I received some plans and drawings from Max Farrow that have changed and still appeared to me to be a work in progress. And also, it did not appear that the actual ramp was going to be code compliant in the sense that there would be no railing on it. The slope, I guess, would have been less, would be a longer type sidewalk so that the railing would not be required. But I do think that if we were going to try to help handicap people, a railing is very, very necessary. I think the railing would detract greatly from the monument, which is, I think, what the engineer also agreed to. However, the proposal that had been coming forth, I think, was also going to be problematic in front of the monument for people walking through the park. It could create a tripping hazard, not to mention a very inviting aspect for skateboarders. So I had asked Louis to take another look at this and I wanted to put it on this agenda so that we could discuss it. In the meantime, Louis has looked into purchasing the ramp that has been put on for Memorial Day. And we received that email information from Mike Nicholson. It cost about $3,300 to purchase it, of which about 400 of that is the delivery and installation if needed. And that would be an asset that the town would have and own so that when we have functions, we can construct the ramp up there that's on for the Memorial Day program, be able to help disabled people access the monument, and it would leave the monument aesthetically intact. So my thought would be to terminate the contract and tell the contractor, you know, we'll adjust for whatever work or materials you've done to date and use the balance of the funds to purchase the ramp permanently for the town and leave the monument as it has been since 1938. But I wanted to bring it forth here so we could have a discussion on it before it's too late. So with that, let me turn it over. Dean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think since day one, the goal has always been, I think, of our board to protect the integrity of the monument and at the same time, provide some type of accessibility. I spoke to Mike during the past couple of days. As a matter of fact, when we initially met about a year and a half ago, we had a subcommittee. And one of the recommendations was to purchase a temporary ramp, a portable ramp that could be erected on different Memorial Day, Veterans Day, other days and all that. And then we said, well, let's take a look at, you know, another type of thing where it'd be a permanent structure. So I think that, you know, everybody wants to work together. I think everyone believes on the goals of both sides. And I think, you know, purchasing a portable ramp that we use, have used in the past year, I think would be good. It would be safe. It would be, you know, meeting the objective. And also, it maybe could be used at other town functions, at different fields or different type of levels of topography when we're having something that has to be made accessible. So, yeah, I think that would be a good compromise. It could probably be stored at the police department, the highway department, and then the right people could be showed how to erect it. And I think that would, you know, that would be good because, like I said, we protect the monument that's been there for a long time. And we also, like, our goal is always to provide access to the people with disabilities and especially veterans because we have had veterans in wheelchairs that can, you know, push themselves. And I think that's what everybody's goal is. So I think this is a good compromise.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, to be honest with you, I've never been real comfortable with altering it. You know, I always left that to the architects and design folks to try to come up with a solution that was both aesthetically pleasing. come up with a solution that was both aesthetically pleasing, was respectful to the original monument, and provided, and met the goal, providing greater accessibility to handicapped It's clear to me that any proposal that we've seen so far doesn't meet all of those challenges. So personally, I agree with you, I don't want to go forward with, with that. The only thing is, I don't know within the budget that's been provided from Town Meeting if we're okay buying a temporary ramp with the same dollars. We should check with Jerry, or if there's another means somewhere else in the budget, we can do that. But I think your suggestion to, to cut off the discussion, find out what the charges are, and, you know, I think, I think we did the right thing. We tried to do, and so did Town Meeting, based on our recommendation, right? We're sensitive to the handicapped and physically challenged, and, you know, Dean mentioned the veterans, the elder veterans. We've seen that time and time again, we didn't want to see it any further, so we, we went out, investigated, and sought design guidance for how we might solve that problem. And as it turns out, it may be that the best design solution is the one we've been providing all along, without altering and changing that. So I agree with you, and-
Absolutely.
I, I think we ought to cut off the discussion with the architect and design folks now, and pursue how we might get the, the ramp in place.
Okay. All right. So let's entertain a motion to end the contract and have Lou pursue purchasing the portable ramp. Seconded?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Dean, do you have any old business?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Bill?
Well, you know, it's old business, new business, it's, and a follow-up from an earlier discussion, while it's in correspondence, I did want to bring it up now, because we were just talking about it as it related to, Louis was kind enough to follow up on what the impact of the water costs were going to be.
Yeah, yeah, we have that.
And I just didn't want to do it under correspondence, but instead wanted to talk about it here. And Louis, I'll let you talk to it, because it's your, it's your data, it was just at my request, and I appreciate you following up. That's C1.
The number is alarming when you see it.
Yeah, no question.
When you see it on paper. Well, you would ask, you would ask for an update on town-wide water accounts and the costs, and we got that for you, and as you can see, we have 35 town, town-wide accounts. I believe we have them all, and the, the number is, the budgeted number for FY13 is $604,000, and simply put, an 82% increase, would result in a yearly cost of $1,099,000.
And so-
Which is an increase of almost a half a million dollars, just for the municipal accounts.
And for the benefit of everybody else, what it turns out to be is a, a net double hit to the taxpayer, because not only will they be personally funding the additional cost to their residence or business, or the ratepayer, I should say, but they'll also be funding it to the municipality, if the municipality gets hit with this cost.
And there's a third, and there's a third factor that's probably more important-
What's that?
-than the two you just named.
What's that, Louis?
Because when we start doing the budget, you know, a lot of, a lot of the, a lot of the smaller budgets, as you well know, in town, are hundred thousand, and when you're increasing, well, we're going to give everybody a 2% increase, well, well, wait a minute, guys, first of all, we've got to knock off a half a million dollars in increase here that's guaranteed, so department heads are going to be, are going to be affected all the way down the line.
So Louis, who, who got a copy of this, besides the Board of Selectmen?
Nobody. You requested it, provided for the Board.
No, no, thank you. That's, I was just curious, because it's an appropriate document with a great list of detail, and we ought to get that out to the FinCom, an appropriate financial head.
Send the FinCom a copy tomorrow.
Just, this is a great early notice, it's not good news, and once again, more reason to have folks at least represent, in this case, representing the town, but representing the ratepayers as well at that hearing, and I appreciate it, I wanted to thank you for doing this, it's informative.
Yeah, no, that was a good bit of information that was requested and put together, so I appreciate that. Good job, and let's keep that to break out for the agenda on the December 3rd meeting also. Did you have any other old business, Bill?
No.
Dean, did you have anything?
No.
Moving on to new business, we have a request from the Veterans Department for the annual Veterans Day Parade, which will be held on Monday, November 12th.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have a request from the Milford High School Boosters Club for a Thanksgiving morning road race, starting at the high school at West Fountain Street, and continuing on and coming back, and it starts at 7:30 AM.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have a petition that came forth from David Nolte, seeking to have Bancroft Ave one way. Since that came in, I had asked Lou to get recommendations from the town engineer, the police, the fire, and the highway surveyor. Have you gotten anything back on any of it yet?
Not complete, as of yet.
Okay. All right, so when that comes back, then we can have it on as an agenda item to deal with completely. We also received a memorandum from Mike Santora regarding the South Main Street-Fruit Street intersection. He worked with the police chief and analyzed the traffics, the traffic accidents that have occurred over the last 10 years at this intersection, and it's been a bad intersection, no question. He talks about 38 accidents in the 10-year period, of which 31 were what he classifies as Type A vehicles on Fruit Street approaching South Main Street that don't stop fully at the stop sign on Fruit Street. He's recommending the following, that we paint stop bars on the pavement at both stop signs at Fruit Street and Fruit Street Extension, paint the word "stop" in six-foot letters on the pavement in front of the stop bars, install a dangerous intersection sign on South Main Street on the southbound side, approximately 350 feet north of the intersection with Fruit Street. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Oh, excellent, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, we've been looking at this for several times, a lot of recommendations, and I think improvements have been made, but it still continues to be many, many accidents. I think these are real good. The only thing I'd like the Board to consider is to ask the chief for the future. I still say this, there's a, there's a light down there, a beacon, a light beacon. I still think it's too small. I think it's, it's difficult to visualize, I think with the sun, the glare and all that, so maybe at some point, we could adopt these, do these, and then he could check out what we could do as far as that beacon, to see if it can be made greater, if it can be placed there and all that. But I think these are, these are great recommendations, we, we did something about seven, eight years ago, so hopefully, we'll continue to try to do things to mitigate the, the bad intersection.
About the beacon, you're talking about the flashing light?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I was going to bring it up as well. There's newer technology.
You want to increase the intensity of the light?
I want him to look at it, and see if we can get something bigger.
Bigger?
Again, you want to see if he can increase the intensity.
Right, and also the size. I think it's too small.
Yeah, the LEDs are a little bit brighter, and the size is small. I agree with that.
Right.
There's anything, because it's age, so I'm going to guess that-
No question.
Yeah. All right, so we all set with these three recommendations anyway? All right, so, motion made, seconded, to adopt the three recommendations, with also the request to the town engineer and the police chief as to whether or not it's possible to increase the, the light there, both in size and intensity. Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. The town administrator has circulated a list of executive session minutes, which seeking to release, May 9th, 2011, January 9th, January 23rd, February 6th, March 19th, April 9th, June 4th, June 18th, July 9th, July 23rd, September 10th, and September 24th, seeking to remain protected, executive session minutes from the meetings of April 25th, 2011, August 22nd, 2011, March 5th, August 6th, and August 20th of 2012.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we need a motion to-
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Yeah.
As you know, it's a motion on intent, we will do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
But we need a vote tonight for the intent.
Okay. All right, so motion made to intend to release the executive session minutes, itemized, and protect the ones also, all right, that's the other motion to you. Okay. Seconded? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have a request from the Valencia Cultural Portuguesa for the following date of November 10th, 2012, 5:00 PM to midnight, for beer and wine dispensed at the Parish Hall of St. Mary's, for a family and community dinner with music.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. New business? Dean?
No, Mr. Chairman, none.
Bill, do you have any?
No new business.
No, okay. Under correspondence, we received a letter from Patricia Lucchini indicating that she seeks, she is resigning from the Milford Commission on Disability, effective October 16th.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, she's been a very good member, so maybe we can send her a letter of appreciation?
Absolutely.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We received pursuant to Chapter 268A, Section 19, from William E. Kincaid Jr., a disclosure by non-elected municipal employee of a financial interest and determination by the appointing authority. Will is now a member of the Finance Committee, and he is disclosing the fact that his mother, Jerry Kincaid, is a member of the Board of Registros, appointed by the Board of Selectmen, also disclosing that his spouse, Lisa Kincaid, is employed by the Milford Public Schools, a member of the Teachers Association, also disclosing that his brother, Kenneth Kincaid, is employed by the Police Department and a member of the Milford Police Association, and also disclosing, I think there's one more.
Together.
Yeah, and also disclosing that his sister, Joanna Roy, is employed by the Milford Public Schools and a member of the Teachers Association. And Lou had provided us correspondence, this had been done also for Finance Committee members in the past, I think most recently for Dave Morganelli, and we need to take a vote that the service, that, that his family member's service with the town of Milford is not likely to affect his service as a Finance Committee member, and, and the previous letters had asked that they refrain from direct participation in discussions of or votes upon specific areas of the school department budget, which might be decreased or increased, whether they could continue to chair meetings where such discussion otherwise take place, and vote upon the final or bottom line of the school budget recommendation. In this instance, I think we would have to add the Police Department, and, and also, I think the Board of Registros would have a budget, I'm not sure, they have, they probably have a small line item.
Small budget.
Yeah. So I think, I think the correspondence would have to have those three departments. Bill?
Jerry also mentions that participation on the subcommittees, which would seem obvious, but I just wanted to make sure that that is part of that as well.
What, that he's precluded from it, or?
Yeah, it's just the recommendation by council, and, and he knows that, so I don't think it's any great hardship, but it precludes him, that that exemption doesn't extend to participation on the subcommittee.
Okay. Okay. All set with that?
Yeah.
Motion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Great.
We have another report from Mike Santora about the Main Street Intersection Improvement Project that's proceeding along. I think all of us will be very, very happy when Main Street gets repaved.
Scheduled for Wednesday, by the way.
Okay.
The storm may put that on.
Okay, great, great. It is, it is proceeding along well, but it has had its challenges.
If it doesn't get done, there'll be a lot of tuba players for the Veterans Day Parade falling down, tripping over the manhole covers.
No, we've, we've told them that it has to be done, or we may have to cancel the parade. We couldn't, I don't think we could have people marching.
Too dangerous, yeah.
Very valuable members here, walking.
Plus the board members, we may lose a couple board members.
Fall down already, we won't come back.
We're expendable, it's a tuba player, something we're worried about.
A lot of the car wreck, I could take it to the hospital right, right away.
Under correspondence, we've addressed a couple of items. We received correspondence from Barry Feingold thanking the police chief and Lou for participating at the Chamber Board of Directors meeting in September to discuss the ICE Image Program, and they have encouraged their member companies to learn more about the image program, so that each individual business can make their own decision about participating, and we would hope that that would be a positive decision. We received an email from an individual that deals with double pole remediation, David Mullin, and I know Lou's had some initial contact with him, I think he wants to try to have a meeting with him. I read over what this individual proposes. I think it's kind of what we already have, in terms of inventorying the poles and determining the status of, of the operations on the pole. I don't know that it does too much to drive National Grid of Horizon off the pole, but Lou, you're going to try to meet with him and see if there's any additional information that might be helpful.
Brian, relative to that-
Yeah.
-just while you were on it, you know, you know, I appreciate the fact that they communicated with us that they are going to go out to a third party, but what shouldn't be lost in the discussion, and hopefully, we're communicating this, this is a, this is an issue of priority and resource. If it's not a priority for them, and if they're not resourcing the pole removals, then they're not going to get done. So, while I appreciate the correspondence, it didn't tell me anything new, so.
That's the exact point that the Chairman and I, discussion we had today, you get it right in the head, I'm not too sure that what he, what he's proposing to do is anything different than we, than what we do, and it comes right down to it. Once that's done, as it is now, it's still incumbent upon National Grid to take the poles down.
Right.
It's as simple as that.
Right.
And we, we, it looks as though he determines the inventory, we've done that, I mean, we know where the poles are.
We did that for them, and we didn't send them a bill for them.
Yeah, so, so-
Exactly what we said today.
But you're going to try to meet with them.
I'm going to, I'm going to try and give them-
Kind of meet with them.
Priority and resource.
Yep.
Yeah, so that, that's, I, I know, I understand. We received an invite from the Prospect Heights Mayor's Association to the ceremony being held to mark the addition of the Korean, Vietnam, and Gulf War veterans' names to the Prospect Heights Veterans Monument. It will be held at the conclusion of the Veterans Day Parade on Monday, November 12th, about 11:30 AM, so we look forward to that event. We also received correspondence, this is C5, Louis, what you and I had talked about, I think it's biomeasure, and looks as though they are not going forward on their proposed expansion.
At this, at this point, the partner that they had teamed up with has filed Chapter 11 protection. At this time, they are seeking another partner, and they're unsure of how that's going to come out, and he just wanted to give me, and allow me to inform the Board members that, at this point, the TIF agreement that was recently signed for the expansion project is, is in limbo. They've got some very important meetings coming up as they're dealing with this, and he assured me, Dennis did, that he would keep me apprised of the situation, and as he keeps me apprised, I'll, I'll inform the Board.
Okay. All right. We'll see what else we can find out on that. We received a thank you from the Board of Governors of the Walden Woods condominium of- Association for the installation of a streetlight on Pole 115 on Cedar Street at the intersection with Walden Way, and we also received a long-term capital planning subcommittee report from the Finance Committee. I haven't had a chance to read it all through. It looks very good. It looks as though it's the kind of useful information that I think we had been looking for, for quite some time, and towards that, especially in lieu of the town meeting that's gone past, I did take another look at that capital improvement, capital planning committee bylaw, and I'd like to send a correspondence to that committee asking them to now meet the terms of the bylaw. It talks about determining annually what capital expenditures will be during subsequent five, 10, five, 10, 15, 20-year periods. It looks to gather information from town departments no later than January 1st, going forth with an annual report in conjunction with the Finance Committee about recommendations and scheduling of capital expenditures, and also talking about a community resources profile. So, you know, I'd like to ask them to really try to comply with the terms of the bylaw and not be this ad hoc committee that sort of organizes itself in September, knowing that there's an October town meeting coming up, looking at the half a dozen or so capital articles that there may be, and coming up with some priority or rating system that is not mentioned anywhere at all in this bylaw. I'd like to try to get them steered back towards the intent of the bylaw. I don't know if you have any comments on that, questions?
It's good.
Yeah, meeting the requirements of the bylaws established already.
Yeah.
Without going to create anything new or different would be a refreshing start. The other thing, Louis, do we have openings on that committee?
Yeah, we have two, right?
Yes.
Louis, appointments, are they? One's moderator, right?
Town moderator.
And one is ours, or both?
Two vacancies.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, two vacancies.
Two vacancies. I think it's one and one.
One and one?
And we have, I don't
Why don't we look to see what we can do about what we've got for Talent Bank?
Anybody's name in the
Next meeting, maybe.
We already have it on the web, looking for interested folks.
Yeah, we should
But nothing in the Talent Bank today for capital improvement?
I don't believe.
Will we get an update maybe next meeting?
Over the next couple of meetings. Let's take our time.
Yeah, yeah.
Try to get people to experience
No rush, but I don't want to handicap them, and Brian's point's a good one. Back to the original charter, meet the requirements of that charter, and then from our perspective as the appointing authority, try to put on people, not leave them handicapped from ability to reach a forum.
Okay, are there any other items that you have, Dean? Correspondence, anything like that? Bill?
No, nothing more.
Okay, with that, we have an executive session for a salary negotiation.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and
I'll move as well.
Seconded to go in executive session. Roll call, vote, Dean.
Aye.
Bill?
I vote in the affirmative.
I too vote in the affirmative, and we will not be returning to open session. Thank you and good night.